Okay, you can continue. Take one.
Okay, so we're gonna talk about heroic medicine, aphorism seventy-four, and the false chronic disease. Can we have a screen share of page of aphorism seventy-four, please?
Is that is sharing or should I?
Oh, you can share it if you have it, but I asked him to make up the files. So because I know this is your day off.
Okay. Can I see?
Well.
Yes. Yeah, hold on, I got it right here.
Is it the same thing up there right now?
It's right now.
Okay. Yeah, there we go. We have a our fun screen share. Okay. Okay, among chronic diseases, we must still alas reckon with those so commonly met with artificially produced in allopathic treatment by the prolonged use of violent heroic medicines in large and increasing doses by the abuse of calomel, corrosive sublimate, mercurial ointment, nitrate of silver, iodine in its ointments, opium, valerian, chin chona bark and quinine, foxglove, prussic acid, sulfur and sulfuric acid, perennial perjatives, venous sections, shedding of streams of blood, bleaches, issues, seatings, etc., whereby the vital energy is sometimes weakened to an unmerciful extent, sometimes if it do not succumb gradually abnormally deranged by each subject in a substance in a particular manner, peculiar manner, in such a way, in order to maintain life against these imminable and destructive attacks, it must produce a revolution in the organism and either deprive some part of its irritability and sensibility, or exalt these to an excessive degree, cause dilation or contraction, relaxation or induration, or even total destruction of certain parts, and develop faulty organic alterations here and there in the interior or the exterior, cripple the body internally or externally in order to preserve the organism from complete destruction by the life of the life by that ever renewed hostile assaults of such destructive forces.
And there's one long sentence.
Yes, it's a very, very long sentence. Okay, so what Hannah is telling us here is that the treatment methods of the day which harm the body, we just scroll up a little bit again. He mentions various metals and things like silver nitrate that's used nowadays. Some of these are still used nowadays, you know, the opiates are used, right? Everybody's talking about quinine products these days. And people aren't given perjatives very often, and then there isn't much in the way of bloodletting, except for when people have that high hemoglobin. When people have high hemoglobin, they still recommend a regular bloodletting, which is then saved and given to others. Okay.
So. But what about like blood donations and like blood tests? Yeah, that considered those to lower vitality or not really?
I don't think that enough in a blood test, you know, a vial or two is going to matter because one could definitely cut themselves and lose that much blood. So he says them, you know, people are now using, what are common treatments today? People are irradiated by various things, x-rays, MRIs, CT scans. People are given chemotherapy. Using opium type products has created a tremendous. Yeah. Opium derivatives have created a really serious problem. You've got people homeless all over the United States because they are addicted to various opium type products. I know my sister's neighborhood, she lives in a nice neighborhood, but there are so many drug addicts, people that have been taking. And what's it called? What's that common drug hawk that people take oxycontin?
Oxycontin.
And things like that where they have just become mere shadows of themselves and they live in tents surrounding a a lake in her neighborhood, and there aren't enough social services to to help with this tremendous burden of society of the people that are addicted to opiates. Yeah, these aren't street drugs. These are drugs that are given out by.
It's good always go, go, Gus is what.
Okay, so we have destructive things that the organism in allopathy is receiving. You know, people go to the doctor, the doctor gives them various pharmaceuticals, and we don't know all the actions of these pharmaceuticals and how they are crippling the body. But it is something to contemplate. I mean, like, what is, what is the word antibiotic? What does that word mean when we break it out?
Like anti-life.
Right, anti-life. So when people take antibiotics, they are killing part of their microbiome. And then that leaves room for other things to grow. It ruins the checks and balances inside the system, and we now know through modern science that the digestive system that a lot of what they, you know, the neurotransmitters are made in the digestive system. And so how does the microbiome in destroying parts of it, what is that doing to people's mental health? If people can't make enough dopamine because of their antibiotics, or they can't make enough serotonin because they've had things that disrupt their microbiome, it's something to think about. And, you know, we obviously know what like surgery and chemotherapy and stuff does to people, especially if they're gonna do a bone marrow transplant, it basically almost kill the person and then inject new bone marrow. And what about organ transplants? People often die from the immunosuppressants. Yeah, because of the giving of the immunosuppressants keep them from rejecting the new organ. And then Haneman talks about how organ failure isn't really the disease itself, it's a product of disease. So in homeopathic terms, organ failure is not the disease, is a product of the disease. Isn't that an interesting concept?
Hmm.
Okay, so then we can continue. Let's look at a couple of these pictures of some of these heroic treatments. These are actual old fashioned pictures. Taking physic. A physician is somebody who gives physic. That is generally why homeopaths don't call themselves physicians per se. This guy is taking something where he is going to either be vomiting or having diarrhea or both. Because you know, that's part of the theory of getting rid of the bad things inside the body.
Detoxing.
Detoxing, there's a modern word for it. Good one, good one, Ivona. Okay, so he's taking his detox treatment.
Yeah, he's looking fresh from it. A juice cleanse.
Okay, next slide. Okay, this guy's having a gentle emetic. He is going to vomit and see he's got his bowl there. He's got his cup. And here's what the doctor's giving him. And he is just kind of helping him out, giving him a little emotional support before he has to barf into that bowl.
It looks like he's squeezing his head. I don't get it.
Yeah.
Oh, well.
Maybe that's part of helping him feel happier about his situation. Yeah. Hard to say. Okay, next slide.
Oh.
Breathing a vein.
Venous section.
Uh huh. Because they think that whenever there was inflammation, they thought that it would help remove the inflammation to take out some of the blood.
Hmm, a very gentle way to put it, breathing a vein, right? Instead of stabbing a person. Breathing a vein, okay. That looks painful.
This is horrible, just barbaric.
Yeah. Looks very painful.
Now, this is a real treat here, a seaton in the neck.
Oh.
Okay, this here is used for a variety of different treatments. And when we look at the case of a Getty, the cure of a Getty, a Getty became one of Haneman's top students. He was an allopathic doctor who had hurt his shoulder, and he had instruments like this placed on his body in order to try to help heal his shoulder. These are multi-purpose instruments. On the back of the neck, it is sometimes used for problems with the eyes.
So it goes through the skin?
Yes, it goes through the skin.
Looks like there's like a spear that goes through it.
Yes, there's a spear that's going through the the thing. And then there's another item called a fontanelle, which is a little different. No, but we don't have a picture of a fontanelle, I don't think.
No.
Um, so it's an interesting thing. This was used for a lot of different things, and one of the ways that it was used was to detract attention from the sick area. So for example, somebody had an ulcer of the right leg, they might put something like this through the left leg in order to detract the attention of the organism to the other leg, and then the body is trying to like fight two different things at once, and then it looks like things are getting better. And they used to open things. Fontanels were also used to open abscesses and to keep them drained. You know about people having surgery and then having drainage tubes after their surgery?
I'm not sure.
So this in itself causes a problem to have the drainage tube. For example, I can give my own, my mother, she had a breast infection, and she got a brain, a drainage tube inserted into her breast, and that area became cancerous later on in life.
No.
And she left us many years ago. So they're still using these types of fontanelles, seatons, strings, and various things like that. These days, one of the thing is in a anal fistula, which you can look up easily using Google for the instructions and various papers on this matter. So various types of these things are used nowadays to some extent, but for sure, the poisoning, the pure poisoning of the patient is not an irregular occurrence in this day and time.
I'm sorry, what did you mean by anal fistula? Because I Googled it, and it seems to be like pathological process in itself, not like a medicinal aid or whatever.
Yeah, but sometimes they try to put various things inside it to drain it and to keep it open as they're trying to heal it.
Okay, okay, okay.
Probably better to use some nitric acid and silica.
Hmm.
They put thread inside that fistula and tie up. And even for water, they tie with the thread.
Why? To cut it?
Yeah, to cut the blood supply of that water so it get.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So it dies off, yeah.
Yeah.
Very creative.
Yeah, the use of things like nitric acid.
Even even for hemorrhoids.
Yes.
Still, it's been practiced. They tie the hemorrhoids.
So some of these things are still in use. Okay, so let's look at page one fifteen of the chronic diseases. We have a screen share here.
Oh, good.
There you go. You got it?
No.
No.
Hold on. I need to go back and screen share.
I'm just gonna go off topic here for a second. Okay, remember Ivona, sometime like on Friday, you asked about the duration of action in a medicine.
Yeah.
And I have a note here to remind that the duration of action is shorter in an acute disease and longer in a chronic disease.
Yeah, and you mentioned this is because like the body uses up the remedy, but this kind of confused me because to me, this sounds as if we're using a tonic. So like something material, so the body uses it up. It doesn't really make sense to me. Maybe I'm wrong, but.
Actually, when, yeah, when in acute diseases, the duration of disease itself, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Yeah, the inactive diseases, the duration of disease is very short.
Yeah.
Disease itself is very aggressive, right? It takes the whole body, whole economy of the body very fast.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
So Hanniman suggested in such a disease, which which have, which is very, its onset is fast, its course is fast. So here you need a very fast acting remedy. So if you give a long acting remedy, that the long acting remedy may take some time to act. The remedy needs, if you want to give, then you might need a large number of doses in acute disease. Though even in acute remedies, you need the number of doses. So as compared to long acting remedy, you might need short acting remedies less in number.
What do you mean? Like even if we use a long acting remedy in acute, then we would need to dose it more often, whereas we use the short acting remedy. That's what I understood.
Well, yeah, because because long acting remedy takes its time to develop the symptoms.
Yeah.
Because they have to cover up the whole space of time. And in short acting, their time is very short, one day, two days, or five days, or six days. And long acting remedies, one week or fifteen days. Hello?
Yeah.
Then I am lost.
It's okay. It's just a side note.
No, just, can you, can you just remind me where were I, what was I talking about?
Um, I've, I've last asked, it seemed to me that you said with long acting remedies, we would have to repeat more often, whereas with short acting remedies, and then you started to say that with long acting remedies, they need like more time to develop, whereas.
Short acting, that short acting, they don't need long period of time. Still, still in acute, in acute phase, you need even acute remedies very frequently because disease, disease itself is very fast. The action of remedies, yeah, the action of the remedy should be as compared to the disease state.
Boninghausen mentioned something interesting along these lines, though, that the dynamic energy is used faster, the more dynamic the disease.
I mean, that, that, that does make sense, I guess. It's hard for me to imagine that process, though.
Yeah, just imagine like the body just using up the dynamic action as it's pressing its way towards cure kind of thing.
It's just simple that when he talks about the dynamic energy, it just mean that you are using a potentized dose, a dynamic remedy. You are not using the crude one or mother tinctures or like that.
Yeah, it's so hard for me to imagine because when we say the body uses it up, to me, it sounds like something material.
Um, well, there is the material kind of energy.
Like the, like the car using the gas, the faster you drive it, you know, it wastes more.
Yeah.
Energy or substance, but um I don't know if that would be the same case with electricity, which is something I think more similar to dynamizations, because I mean, I imagine it's like a force or something. I don't know. I don't know. It's hard for me to still understand it, I guess.
Yeah, it's means it is about the, it is material and immaterial thing. When you talk about the dynamization, he talks about you are giving more space within the atom to vibrate those atom within that atom more faster. It is just giving a more space.
I'm not sure about that because last time we discussed, I mean, by, I don't know, well, by thirty C or twelve C, we don't really have atoms, so maybe some other particles, but.
The fairy dust is used faster, the more acute the disease.
No, I mean, I believe that because Hannah himself says, like, in acute cases, we have to dose more often, so.
Yeah, so duration durations like as per chart, it differ as per symptoms.
Hmm.
So you have to go more on the symptoms as opposed to the chart.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I was always skeptical towards this idea that there is a specific number of days for the remedy to last. I mean, I think there's like a certain window, but surely it must depend on other factors.
Specific day, specific, it has specific days, a duration, but it's also depend upon person, that particular person as well. Individualize, it's, I don't know what.
You mean, you mean on, on the, it depends on the person whose case we take or the person that's proving?
The person. No, 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 no.
The sixth person, okay.
Yeah.
That makes sense.
Because, because, see, the standard, they have given that the value is suppose seven days. Suppose any remedy is acting for seven days.
Okay.
But still, we see it acts more than seven days in some cases, and it may act less than seven days in many cases.
Okay.
So it's subjective.
Hmm, hmm, okay.
So you cannot assume that it's.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it will always act like if you give, I don't know, fast, it will always act for forty days or something.
Yeah, it may go beyond that also.
Oh, even beyond.
Even beyond, I have seen the chronic remedies like calcarea or like opodium, whose action is forty to fifty days, they go beyond three months also.
Because the person still gets better and better?
Better, yeah. But after that, you might need a dose again.
Okay.
Okay.
Ah.
You continue with the chronic disease, page one one five.
Yeah, definitely.
Take one.
Yeah, sorry, I'm typing to a patient. Okay, can somebody start reading?
Yeah. Can I?
Yes, please.
May I? So by such treatments which are incapable of curing the original disease but are exhausting and debilitating, the aggravation of Sora is not only hastened from within, but new artificial and threatening ailments are generated by such delusive allopathic cures, so that the vital force thus attacked from two sides often is unable to escape. Should I go on?
Yes.
If in such cases, the sad consequences of this indirect assaults of the old methods of cure were dynamic disturbances only, they would surely either disappear of themselves when the treatment is discontinued, or they ought at least to be extinguished again effectively through homeopathic medicines. But this is not at all the case. They do not yield, very likely by this indirect, continuous, and repeated assaults on the sensitive irritable fiber by such injudicious medicinal disease potencies, which are given in large doses. Hmm, frequently repeated, the vital force is obliged to meet this attack and endeavor either to dynamically change this tender internal organs which are assaulted so mercilessly, or to reconstruct them materially so as to make them unassailable to such violent attacks, and thus to protect and shield the organism from general destruction. Thus, for example, this force which instinctively preserves life beneficially shields the fine sense the skin of the hand with a careless covering of hard horny skin in persons with whom the skin is exposed to frequent injuries during hard labor, whereby the skin is injured by hard scratching materials or by corroding substances. So also in a long continued allopathic treatment, which has no true healing power with respect to the disease, no direct pathic, that is homeopathic relation to the parts and processes concerned in the chronic disease, but internally assaults other delicate parts and organs of the body, in such cases, the vital force, in order to protect the whole from this, the whole from destruction, dynamically and organically transmutes these fine organs, that is, either makes them inactive or paralyzes them, or dulls their sensitive sensitiveness, or makes them altogether careless. On the one side, the most tender fiber is abnormally thinned or hardened, and the more vigorous fibers consumed or annihilated, thus there arise artificially advantageous organisms, malformations and degenerations, which at postmortem examinations are cunningly ascribed to the malignancy of the original disease. Such an internal state is not infrequent and is in many cases incurable, only where there are still sufficient vital powers in a body, not too much bow down by age, but where under an allopathic regime do we not find the powers wasted. Under favorable favorable external circumstances, the vital force dynamically freed from its original disease, where the careful, careful homeopathic antipsoric treatment of a practiced physician may succeed in gradually reasserting itself, and in gradually absorbing and transforming those often numerous advantageous secondary formations which it was compelled to form. Which it was compelled to form. Such a transformation is however only possible to a still energetic vital force. Which has been in great part set free from its sorrow, only however, under favorable external circumstances. And after the lapse of a considerable time and usually in only an imperfect manner. Does the vital force succeed in this almost creative endeavor? Experience proves daily that the more ze- zealous, zealous, zealously. Oh, zealously, okay. Experience proves daily that the more zealously the allopath puts into practice in chronic disease. His perverse destructive art, often with great care, industry and persistence. The more he ruins his patients in health and life.
Wow, that's a pretty intense uh statement there. It makes sense though. Yeah, that the, that the. Treatment. Dynamically deranges the body so that it, it hardens and tries to protect itself. Internally, that the body will like make like calluses and things like that and different formations. In order to try to protect the internal organs during said treatment, which. During a postmortem can show that there are things that have gone wrong inside the body and they say, oh, look, this is how bad the disease was.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
But then the body can overcome it.
We see that in many cases, who the person who are having a longstanding diarrhoeal disease. Long diarrhea, diarrhea, diarrhea. Longstanding diarrhoeal disease, their internal sphincter get tightened itself. It's um, uh, it's from a vital force that to stop that evacuation of fluid. From uh body, you can see, right? So the same person might complain of constipation as well. Uh, along with the diarrhea, but more often he will complain that he is having. Loose tools, which is very difficult to evacuate.
Okay.
Why, why is loose tools which he is, were having very difficult to evacuate? Why? Because internal sphincter become hard, it went into a spasm.
Yeah, yeah, to stop the diarrhea, so thus evacuation becomes more difficult.
Yeah.
Like a secondary effect.
What, what allopath does in this case? They will wait for some days and they will just cut that internal sphincter. And then it will go, become paralyzed.
That sounds like a bad plan.
It doesn't sound good, no, but they love cutting parts off, that's true. I read a very good book by one Bulgarian homeopath, I mean, it's a bit, it's a bit more, more modern, but um he describes allopathic methods. As in, we, so the body is like a boat in the sea and then um. If there is a hole in the boat, they either like drain the water instead of fixing the hole, or if the radio um. Like emission shows bad signals, they just cut off the radio emission, so it doesn't show bad signals, that's their method, he says. I thought it was quite um well put.
Yeah, that's a good analogy.
Um, yeah, it's quite nice, yeah.
Basically, we need, here in this whole two pages we see. And even himself is talking about how the body is functioning, it is not uh organic. Uh, endularized system on specific organ or specific individual system. Everything is internally connect, connected with each part of the body, every cell is connected. Every cell plays important role in the vital function of whole body. It's may have a large impact or it may have a small impact, but it will have. But in allopathy, small impact, they don't count.
Let's talk about paracetamol poisoning as an example. Let's say somebody gets arthritis and the doctor says. Take acamol, paracetamol, whatever you call it in your country, Tylenol. And use that four times a day, every day. For your pain so that you don't have pain in your joints. Now what happens to the liver?
I don't know.
The liver stops functioning properly.
Actually, liver, liver function is to detox all that poisons.
Is it because of that? Because there's too great burden or the disease switches place? Which one is it?
No, overburden, liver will start, uh huh. It's, it's mean for detoxing all the poisons. Up to that level, but if it is more than it tolerance, then it, it, it itself will affect the liver.
And the liver will then start hardening or getting fatty or degenerating or getting holes. Or taking on a weird appearance. The problem isn't. Liver disease, it's poisoning from Tylenol.
Yeah, 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 yeah. There's nothing wrong with the liver, actually.
No. Right, that's just one of all.
One nowadays we see. Lot of people having diabetes.
Uh huh, yeah.
Right? And you know, there are, there are, there are two methods in allopathy. One is they give pills, that small pill, I don't know what is the names. And another, the table, insulin.
You mean injections?
Injections, right.
Yeah, uh huh.
So, we, in one way you can say injection is okay, but tablets that pills. That will kill your kidney.
Oh, they will?
They will kill your kidneys within a short span of uh five years. And then it's begin five years and up till ten or fifteen years.
Oh, no.
Start functioning well.
Oh, no. And then they get a kidney medication or?
Yeah, 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 exactly. Then they will give you kidney medication.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And with all those medications, their liver also gets damaged and then. The patient lands in multi uh organic failure.
Yeah, it's very difficult for them because they always have, I mean, I think it's often a case of, you know, you treat one thing and then you give another thing. And then you give a thing for the side effects of the first thing and a fourth thing for the side effects of the third thing, you know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Later go on.
Yeah, unfortunately.
Yeah, so.
One of the ways that people get diabetes is from uh one of the vaccines, I don't remember off the top of my head, does anybody have a? Have it off the top of their head, which vaccine has the tendency to kill the pancreas?
Uh, no.
I don't remember off the top of my head.
Maybe the TB one? Just a guess.
Is TB given as, the BCG given where you live?
Yeah, definitely.
BCG, BCG, uh, that vaccine for two or closes.
Oh, is it? Okay, so I'll Google BC, BCG and diabetes. And let me see.
There's so many, you know, since I was born in nineteen sixty eight America. I didn't receive a lot of the.
Oh, no, they're actually saying, they're actually saying the BCG vaccination may defeat type one diabetes, so not sure. Not sure, I was just thinking, um, my associations are. TB and phosphorus and then phosphorus having the affinity for pancreas, so maybe I'm totally off, but. But they're saying it could, it should, it should cure diabetes one, the BCG, so I think we're wrong.
Either we're wrong or they're wrong or somebody's wrong.
Somebody's wrong.
Can't necessarily, yeah.
Maybe we should give up on homeopathy and try the BCG vaccine for patients.
I've never had it, so that might be a fun experiment.
It's, it's gonna be fun.
We have, every person, every citizen is poisoned with that BCG.
Really?
Almost, almost ninety nine point nine.
How do you know?
Yeah, because no one escapes nowadays.
Because nobody's a vaccine refuser in the maternity home?
Yeah, they will not let you go out without vaccination.
Um, don't get me wrong, I am definitely a vaccine skeptic, but I'm also anti-vax skeptic. I'm just an overall skeptic, so I'm just asking, why do you think um BCG is harmful overall? Because I remember reading from Burnett, I didn't read the whole thing admittedly, but he says. Only some people have um a tendency to have um ill effects from vaccinations, I mean, he might be wrong, but.
Oh, he, he specifically means um smallpox vaccination.
Okay, fair enough.
And remember that. Though it may not be bad for everyone, still it may not be good for everyone.
Yeah, it's not bad, but it's not good, so it has to be bad.
So it's good for some people and it's bad for some people, you can see.
It's like how you see the MMR, you know, the MMR in some children. It creates dysbiosis, which then in turn can cause autism. If you cure that dysbiosis.
You mean of the intestinal flora?
Yes, it can then in turn reverse the autism, but that doesn't happen with every child, it happens individually.
No, but um, but honestly, what is your take? Do you think like that every vaccination, this is becoming a bit controversial, but um. Do, do you think every vaccine like will have some, certain ill effects, just like according to homeopathic theory?
Well, since most vaccines are made with poisons as adjuvants. And so that has to be de- detoxed from the body. And when we're looking at a vaccine, does the benefit outweigh the risk? Is there a suitable treatment? Is it necessary to give chickenpox vaccine to children nowadays? Because what is the premise that they're giving the chickenpox vaccination nowadays? So that mothers don't lose time at work.
No way.
That's really the main reason. That's really the main reason. We all remember having it, you know, we all remember.
I never, I never, I never have them.
You didn't have it?
We had, we had one news in uh recent days. Uh, that one of the man of almost eighty years old. Uh, had vaccinated him from that COVID for eleven times.
I've seen the article, yeah, they shared it, and he's like, I'm fine.
No, what happened actually, he is eighty years old and he had been suffering from arthritis.
Yeah.
From long, long time and he felt better with the dose. Then he thought that uh it's a remedy, so he uh, he just go there and have dose.
Well, the COVAX, and if he had the COVAX, and I looked up the ingredients, there is an immunosuppressant in COVAX.
Oh, that's, that must be it.
That might be part of it.
Hmm, must be it, because arthritis can be like autoimmune, right?
Eleven doses and he was caught at twelve.
That's insane.
Oh, sure. Your video and you wanna?
So you have to look at the benefits and the risks and whether or not. There are other options available for treatment that might be easier and more effective. When evaluating whether or not vaccine is in somebody's best interest.
No, for sure, um, I just want, I mean, don't, don't get me wrong, like intuitively, I'm totally against it, but just like, I like to have a, I like to know why. You know.
Yeah, you always have to know why, you have to do the research.
Yeah.
Curiosity.
Yeah, definitely. I mean, I'm sure it would help us understand many other things as well, because you know, it's all the body, it's all connected. Body substance and all of that. So, but with vaccines, I think like, oh, but do we really have to detox if? Because the, it, it is quite small amount, but then on the other hand, the body is quite small when the, it gets the dose as well. And the immune system is not yet developed, I mean, it's, it's kind of tricky, right?
It is same like when we have a small dose, allopathic dose.
Yeah.
It takes care of whole body, so that's small dose of vaccine also have ability to affect your body.
Hmm, for sure.
Some, I could say some people may do some effects. It's not, it's like that, if you say takes some amount of food. How much amount of food you need to satisfy your appetite may not be sufficient for someone other.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They might need is even a large amount, some may need a small. It's, it's thing, individualized thing, so some people may uh. Get benefited with uh those vaccines, but not all.
Not sure about benefit, but maybe no harm.
Bad idea, it's bad idea to vaccinate or inject that of. Uh, universally, unconditionally to everyone.
Yeah, I guess that, so, the whole individualization thing is missing from their practice a lot.
Yeah, because it's public health, it's a public health measure. And not everybody can receive something that is grown in a chicken egg. And then put with an antibiotic, an antifungal and aluminum. And inject that into somebody, some.
Let her finish.
Very poorly, and others will just kind of have a neutral reaction. Really depends, you know, as homeopaths, we are so into individualization. But it's hard to look at a broad spectrum, public health plan, with the exception of things like clean water. Clearly, that is a public health benefit.
It's uh life cannot be measured with a foot scale.
Yeah, but on the other hand, we do have recommendations by Hannah Manz where. What was it, scarlet fever, where everybody was given a belladonna, so it's not impossible for it to happen in homeopathy as well.
I've used belladonna to prevent scarlet fever and it works.
Listen, what Hanniman talk in that aphorism, he is talking about epidemic outbreak. He haven't given.
We give vaccinations for epidemic outbreak.
Listen, he haven't given and adds genus epidemic.
Sorry?
What he told that he treated a case of scarlet fever with belladonna.
Yeah.
What he says, those who got belladonna in previous attack escaped the second attack.
No, um, um, then I'm thinking of something else, there was a disease.
You're thinking, you're, you're thinking the right thing, Ivana, you're right.
I will.
You can pull up the aphorism for sure.
I will check because I was.
Because belladonna is specific.
Aphorism thirty three.
Even when we read Little Women, did you read Little Women?
No, what is that?
Oh, it's a book by Louisa May Alcott. There was a group of people who lived in Massachusetts in America. You've got like Ralph Waldo Emerson, Louisa May Alcott. Um, and others, many others, and they all used homeopathy. And she put in her book uh about um. Her book called Little Women, which is a really nice book, you can even watch the movie on, on Netflix if you have Netflix. Which is a good movie, but she talks about visiting a house, one of the girls goes to visit a house. And where they have scarlet fever and she goes back to the house.
Okay.
And she opens their medical chest and she decides. Does she need to take some acetate or some belladonna, take some belladonna, but sniff some camphor. And then she ends up with scarlet fever, which then turned into traumatic fever, which then ended her life. So it's an interesting thing. So it's an interesting thing. And it's just right there in that book and nobody sees. Every time a homeopath runs across that connection and they go, oh wow, how cool, people really were using homeopathy.
But you said she died in the end.
Yes, because she had antidoted her belladonna with the camphor.
That's insane, I love that. Is that a book or a movie?
It's both. Such a favorite book.
Is it a true story?
Not really, but it's written in true times, you know, about like the civil war in the United States.
And in true homeopathy, yeah.
Uh huh, because they use homeopathy.
That's incredible.
Used homeopathy.
By the way.
Waldo Emerson.
By the way, um, I have a similar tale before we move to aphorism thirty-three, um, you know, Gabriel Garcia Marquez, he's a I think he's from Argentina, he's a, he's a noble, he's a nobleist in literature. He got it like, I think in the sixties, he received the Nobel Prize for, uh, I think Love in the Time of Color, I'm not sure.
Uh, that one, yes.
Yeah, but basically I was reading his book, A Hundred Years of Loneliness. And he kept mentioning, and it's, it's, it's amazing, it's like magic, magical, um, surrealism. And he keeps mentioning, among other things, um, in amazing ways, th- these plants, he mentions belladonna and acainite and all of these different things. And I was like, that's so peculiar that he keeps mentioning these plants that are so commonly used in, um, homeopathy. And then he even mentions a homeopath in, in, in his book. He wasn't a real homeopath, but it was all a disguise, but basically his father was a homeopath, so this is why he included this, um, in the book. I thought it was quite interesting, yeah. Quite great, you know, if you look better like homeopathy is actually in more places than you'd think.
Yep.
So, um, Sanjay wanted us to look at aphorism thirty-three?
Yeah.
In accordance with this fact, this is undel- the rhythm. It is undeniably shown by all experience that the living organism is much more disposed and it has a greater liability to be acted on. And to have its health deranged by medicinal powers than by morbidic noxious agents and infectious miasms. Or in other words, that the morbidic noxious agents possess a power of morbidly deranging man's health that is subordinate and conditional. Often very conditional, whilst medicinal agents have an absolute unconditional power, greatly superior to the former. And there's a.
Put not.
Put not, yeah, that's how we call it. A stri- a striking fact in corroboration of this is that whilst previously to the year eighteen-one, when the smooth scarlatina of Sidenhalm still occasionally prevailed epidemically among children. In the fact without exception, all children who had escaped it in a former epidemic. In a similar epidemic which I witnessed in Conning, Konig Sluta. On the contrary, all the children who took in time a very small dose of belladonna remained unaffected by this highly infectious infant cell disease. If medicines can protect from a disease that is raging around, they must possess a vastly superior power of affecting our vital force. Lovely. And it makes sense.
Because then the medicine is in their body. As the epidemic, the medicine is then in their body as the epidemic is raging.
Yeah.
So it has to do with exposure and having the medicine in the body at the time of exposure.
Yeah.
Okay. So what we learned today?
What we learned today, we learned today, um, that by aggressive allopathic treatment, the body has a tendency to uh, add new pathology, well, new diseases to its state in order to protect itself from the influence of the medicinal drugs, like hardening of organs, to protect itself from the the morbidic influence of the continuous. We learned something new. Well, uh, that not everybody will react the same to this drugging, depending on the susceptibility and sensitivity of the body. And.
One more thing I could like to ask, one more thing. Basically, Hanniman, uh, when we see the structure of organ on, in thirty, sorry, in seventy, after seventy, uh, in seventy-one, he told, he tells that, uh, how, what is the importance of totality of symptom? And then he, in seventy-two, he defines what is acute disease and what is chronic disease. Right? In seventy-three, he talks little bit about active disease.
Yes.
And then it from seventy-four, he began to talk on chronic disease. Look, from here, he talking about chronic disease. And even, and the, uh, in chronic disease, uh, my, my, his myismatic theory. He talks about a medicinal disease, means every wrongly, uh, uh, treated, uh, treated diseases could develop, uh, into a, is non-miasma, sorry. What do you call, uh, antis, sorry, psoric. A psoric, uh, myismatic manifestation, it will be like.
Yeah, in aphorism seventy-four here, he's talking about the false chronic disease, which is just injury due to allopathy.
Yeah. He's talking about those medicinal diseases. Which, uh, we, they come to a home path for treatment and we consider as a true myismatic disease and actually they are not.
So does it matter in the treatment to differentiate which symptoms are man-made? And which symptoms are from the body, the disease like organic?
Yeah, 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 you are right.
I'm asking, does it matter that we differentiate? I mean, obviously it does, otherwise you wouldn't mention.
See, even, even in, uh, see, he's talking about a treatment of, uh, uh, just, uh, we will talk about that, he's talking about true true myismatic disease. What is true myismatic disease? Uh, in chronic state, he categorize into two, one is, uh, veneral origin and one is non-venereal origin. And both have some disease at the background which is badly treated with allopathy. Right?
Is what?
Badly treated with allopathy. Right? In veneral, there is syphilis and gonorrhea. And in non-veneral, there is some sort of skin disease which is not treated correctly. Right? But here, he is talking about other diseases which are not truly fall in these two category. Right, Tikwa?
Right.
No, I'm just kind of confused. Are you meaning to say that like, um, we have myismatic diseases because of the fact um, that those were badly treated miasms that went internally?
Well, if you look, okay, so in, in aphorism seventy-four, the person is going to be affected and then also when we combine it with chronic diseases, pages one fifteen, it talks about, um, how the body is affected by the inappropriate treatment and oftentimes they have spore already. So let's say somebody finds out that they have cancer. They go to the allopath, they, if they have cancer already, maybe because they're affected with spore. But then when they start getting radiation and radiation burns and chemotherapy. And then they're starting to get damage to the other organs, we're looking at something much more complex than the original miasmic disease. So it would be simpler when we have a patient that comes down with a miasmic disease. It's simpler to treat them directly before they then go and get aggressive other treatments. It's more complicated. He's just saying this really complicates our cases. To have people, you know, with way less blood than they need because they've had their blood taken as a therapeutic regiment or they've been on a starvation diet. Or things like that. I mean, nobody's doing starvation diets nowadays, which is pretty good. But they were very popular. And people aren't, uh, but they are taking things like, uh, quinine. Um, the quinine treatments given that are prophylactic in, uh, like, let's say Africa, um, can result in hearing loss in children. This is not an unusual thing.
But what is like the takeaway from this, that people shouldn't use allopathy or we should like, um, such, like advise people not to use allopathy?
No, it's easier and faster for a homeopath to do their work if people aren't.
If you're good, if you're, if you're good at what you do, I guess.
Which takes some time.
Yeah. As Hanneman would put it, a practiced position.
Well, these are just things for us to think about. You know, he says, no intelligent man could think that believing somebody of their blood is going to actually make them well.
They are. They are. Very cutthroat of them. If that's the word.
Yeah. So aggressive treatments take their toll on the body. There's your takeaway.
Yeah, yeah.
And then we have to deal with that, the gra- the result of the aggressive treatment along with the underlying cause.
Yeah.
Your honest, the video is very blurry today.
Sorry?
Your video is very.
Yeah, because I'm in a room, um, that ha- doesn't have proper lighting, lighting. Had to work with what I have, because I'm at my, I'm at, I'm at my parents' house, so.
Yeah.
I wanted to isolate myself, but the lighting is, my lamp died, so.
Well, Sanjay always has perfect lighting.
Oh, yeah.
Doesn't he?
Like HD shit, yeah.
Yeah, he's got, he's got all the bells and whistles. He's got his Yeti microphone and.
But he doesn't have a heater.
I know, isn't that strange? He has no heater, but he's got all the bells and whistles with the sound systems. The lighting systems, the computer systems.
He wants to look cute, doesn't matter if he freezes. I was like that in high school as well.
I'm still in that high school. Look, this is.
Me too, man.
This is.
That's me.
You can see that's my screen.
Who's that beautiful girl? Yeah, it's a nice, it's a nice little clinic. I like it.
Yeah, he's got all the bells and whistles.
Yeah. You should invite us to visit you, Sanjay.
You can come with Tikwa.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Once Corona stops or whatever.
Yeah.
Well, I don't think India is on the red list this week.
This week?
It's seriously like that where we live. The USA was just taken off the, the red list. But I think Canada just went red, who knows?
Jesus Christ.
Seriously, it is that they call it the traffic light system, no joke. The schools, they call it the traffic light system and each city, each city is given a designation, whether it's red, yellow or green. Our city is red again because there are twenty thousand cases of Corona per day in our country. We are a country of nine point something million.
But that's what I keep asking when I, like, I hear in the news, oh, we have this many thousand more cases. I'm like, how is it possible? We have four million people in my country, like, where do they pull these numbers from?
Well, they've just, they're. Well, my son Shiva just came down with Corona and, you know, the kindergartens, um, of my other dau- my daughter. They have, um, some of the teachers have Corona, so now they're all empty. And then people have to go for testing.
Yeah, you're in, uh, Mumbai also having more than twenty thousand cases per day.
And we're up to twenty here and we're not even at peak. And then the, the more shots they seem to give, then the more the cases seems to get worse. It just seems to be going like that. If you look at it, we're on our fourth wave.